Correct.
Thank you. That was fun. Much of the time. That was wonderful. That's wonderful. It is now six o'clock. We will begin our work study session for the Adrian City Commission. It is September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Mr. Hope.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Riller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Mr. Kettleberry.
President.
Mr. Gao.
President.
All commissioners present. At this time, I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing we're gonna talk about tonight, as has been our recent custom, is to review Terrace Adrianian Matter. I don't have a lot prepared to share. I've kind of been sharing with you my weekly reports, so maybe I'll just bring you up to the moment and the up-fronted questions that you might have. Today and tomorrow, we're doing resident meetings at the motels, we being the emergency operations side team, at the motels where bulk of the residents have been located, that's Thompsonia and Super 8, and then tomorrow, the Adrianian, where most of the residents who needed assistance are located. For those who seem to go pretty well, I was not at the meetings today, I will be at the Adrianian meeting tomorrow. We have representatives of Medallion Management there, they've identified plenty or so units and similar projects that they manage, obviously elsewhere in the state, but not located in Allen County, that they are there taking applications for, for those who are interested. By understanding that quite a few people did fill out applications at meetings today. That'll opportunity to be available tomorrow as well, if one wants to do that, the goal was permanent housing, of course. The rest of the folks, the deadline, as we've discussed, is September fifteenth, we'll need to be out of the other two hotels at that time. We continue to clean rooms and get them ready, and we bring in those who that can accommodate, and won't be able to accommodate everyone's needs, since it's not really barrier free, they may not have the second-floor rooms. But it's our hope that between permanent housing opportunities that have been found, and rooms that are still available in Adrianian, which there are probably ten or so at this point, and if more than that, that nobody will be left without an option come September fifteenth. We have explored options for repairing the roof on the front building there, where the potential community room would be. We had three different companies look at it, expect it, two of them quoted a complete roof repair for us, so that pricing is in the mid-hundreds in terms of cost, and I don't want to be too specific in case we end up wanting to get it out. One of those two also identified the cost for a repair, which they would want for at least a year, probably within the period of time, that was in the $20,000 range. The third company did not, as of this point, provide a customer. So I'm curious to get your continuing thoughts on that. Weather is starting to cool off, the end of the agents think it helps have a place to go besides Courtyard, which is one of the rooms, obviously, Motel rooms, and they're not pretty tight, that's the one place you have. I don't know if I have really anything else particularly to share that I haven't already shared in my reports, so I'm just opening up any questions, may I?
I'm curious, things like TVs, refrigerators, microwaves, the rooms that are occupied right now, are they all in good shape for those types of things?
They either have, as far as I know, everybody's got a working TV, we did continue the TV contract that the prior owner had. I think all the occupied rooms probably have a fridge and microwave, now we've ordered microwave for all the rooms that didn't have one, and or many fridges for those that didn't have one. One of the problems with the remaining vacant rooms is that they didn't have working HVAC units, it's like a wall unit that provides heat and air conditioning, we have to replace some of those, and we've ordered those as well. We're working on evaluating, so a couple of the rooms, since we were cleaning them out, we found roaches, brought an exterminator in and addressed those particular instances, and then tomorrow, we, believe it or not, the exterminator has a dog that sniffs out bugs, so the dog's diet is very busy, and it takes a while to get out of the schedule, but we're on the schedule for tomorrow, and he'll be out to evaluate where else are maybe not sponsored. Lisa had been cleaning the rooms that she could clean, some of them needed more than, you know, they needed a professional level of cleaning, and we brought Lashelia and cleaned a couple of other rooms, needed that much.
Any limitations with the estimates you've received so far, are their calendars moving up?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's a problem with everybody, the one company that estimated the repair, they indicated they could get at it in a couple of weeks if we chose to go that route, so, like I say, I'm curious to know whether this is something, given the kind of exigent circumstances, you want to have us get out, or you want us to get just a roof repair, you know, and it slowed that one down the time somewhat, but weather a little bit, but we should be good for a couple months.
What does the contractor said when it comes to, like, does it need a complete repair, or does it need just to be fixed in the certain spots that they've identified?
Yeah, no, it needs a complete repair, it's shot, there's no question about that. Question, I guess, is whether it's worth doing that, given probably our, the limited timeframe that we're in. There was one thing when we thought we had an interested buyer for the property, we don't now, and so are we, you know, investing in something that's here now?
Well, now that we don't have an interested buyer, are we going to take another look at this, and look at it as something that we may want to hang on to for a little while? I've worked with some of the other housing agencies, and we always have issues in Adrian for temporary housing.
Yeah, and Greg needs direction from us, like, you know, what, how far are we going to get into this, that's?
I guess that's why I bring up. That's sort of helping.
Good question.
Thank you. All right, it is now six o'clock. We will begin our workday session for the Adrian City Commission. It is September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Commissioner Hope.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Riller.
President.
Commissioner Strayer.
President.
Commissioner Kethel Berry.
President.
Commissioner Gao.
President.
All commissioners present.
At this time, I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing we're gonna talk about tonight, as has been our recent custom, is to review terrorist Adrianian matter. I don't have a lot prepared to share. I've kind of been sharing with you my weekly reports, so maybe I'll just bring you up to the moment and the up front questions that you might have. Today and tomorrow, we're doing resident meetings at the motel, the we being the emergency operations side team. At the motels where bulk of the residents have been located, that's Thompson, Super A, and then tomorrow, the Adrianian, where most of the residents who needed assistance are located. For those that seemed to go pretty well, I was not at the meetings today. I will be at the Adrianian meeting tomorrow. We have representatives of Medallion Management there. They've identified one or so units and similar projects that they manage, obviously elsewhere in the state, but not located in our town. That they are there taking applications for, for those who are interested. By understanding that quite a few people did fill out applications at meetings today. So that'll, that opportunity will be available tomorrow as well, if one wants to do that. The goal was permanent housing, of course. The rest of the folks, their deadline, as we've discussed, is September fifteenth. We will need to be out of the other two hotels at that time. We continue to clean rooms and get them ready, and we bring in those who that can accommodate and won't be able to accommodate everyone's needs, since it's not really barrier free. They play out the second floor rooms. But it's our hope that between permanent housing opportunities that have been found rooms that are still available in Adrianian, which there are probably inner self at this point, and if more than that, that nobody will be left without an option come September fifteenth. We have explored options for repairing the roof on the front building there where the potential community room would be. We had three different companies look at it, expect it. Two of them quoted a complete roof repair for us, so that pricing is in mid hundreds in terms of cost, and I don't want to be too specific in case we end up wanting to get it out. One of those two also identified the cost for a repair, which, which they would want for at least a year, probably within the period of time. That was in the twenty thousand dollar range. The third company did not, as of this point, provide a customer. So I'm curious to get your continuing thoughts on that. Weather is starting to cool off, and they just think it helps have a place to go besides Courtyard, which is where obviously motel rooms are, you know, pretty tight. That's the one place you have. I don't know if I have really anything else particularly to share that I haven't already shared in my reports, so just open up any questions, may I?
I'm curious, things like TVs, refrigerators, microwaves, the rooms that are occupied right now, are they all in good shape for those types of things?
They either have, as far as I know, everybody's got a working TV. We did continue the TV contract that the prior owner had. I think all the occupied rooms probably have a fridge and microwave. Now we've ordered microwave for all the rooms that didn't have one and or many fridges for those that didn't have one. One of the problems with the remaining vacant rooms is that they didn't have working HVAC units. It's like a wall unit that provides heat and air conditioning. We have to replace some of those, and we've ordered those as well. We're working on evaluating, so a couple of the rooms, since we were cleaning them out, we found roaches. Brought an exterminator in and addressed those particular instances, and then tomorrow, we, believe it or not, the exterminator has a dog that sniffs out bugs. Well, the dog's diet is very busy, and it takes a while to get out of its schedule, but we're on a schedule for tomorrow, and he'll be out to evaluate where else to maybe not sponsor. Lisa had been cleaning the rooms that she could clean. Some of them needed more than, you know, they needed a professional level of cleaning, and we brought washelvia and cleaned a couple of other rooms that needed that much. Any limitations, but the estimates you've received so far? Are their calendars moving up? Yeah, well, I mean, that's a problem with everybody. The one company that estimated the repair, they indicated they could get at it in a couple of weeks if we chose to go that route. Like I say, I'm curious to know whether this is something, given the kind of exigent circumstances, you want to have us get out, whether you want us to get just a roof repair, you know, and it slowed that one down the time somewhat, but we'll help against the weather a little bit, but we should be good for a couple months.
What does the contractor said when it comes to, like, does it need a complete repair, or does it need just to be fixed in the certain spots that they've identified?
Yeah, no, it needs a complete repair. It's shot. There's no question about that. Question, I guess, is whether it's worth doing that, given probably our the limited timeframe that we're interested in. There was one thing when we thought we had an interested buyer for the property. We don't now, and so are we, you know, investing in something that's here now? Right.
Well, now that we don't have an interested buyer, are we going to take another look at this and look at it as something that we may want to hang on to for a little while? I worked with some of the other housing agencies, and we always have issues in Adrian for temporary housing.
Yeah, and Greg needs direction from us, like, you know, what, how far are we going to get into this? That's
I guess that's why I bring up. That sort of helps us decide what we want to do with the roof.
Right. Yeah, the roof is not the only problem. There's, as I indicated when we first took possession, all these valuation is that it's fine in short term, but over long term, it's quite a bit of work. Often is the work they're failing. You know, and that becomes extremely stressful. So I think, if you're interested in that as a potential option, next step would be to have somebody really go through an estimate, what all that work would be. You get an idea of what the longer
When we look at housing in Lenawee County, we have Sherwinburg, which is an emergency shelter that's supposed to be, people are supposed to rapidly rehouse, right? There's typically a time limit for that. I think we only have seven units in Lenawee County that are transitional housing, and so we are looking at using this from what we call transitional housing over. So there's transitional housing. Variety is transitional housing for a lot of options. There's actually some state funding right now that may be able to apply or even help cover some of the costs. Mista or the Salvation Army right now will cover some of those costs. We're actually using it as transitional housing. So that if we're gonna, you know, that might be an option to look at as well. The continuum of there are the breaks and variance through housing home for the horrors do maybe cover some of the costs. I don't, I would have to look into that a little bit more, but since they're, you know, managing all of the people that are staying there, that might be an option. But I will say that, and obviously I have a biased opinion of this, but I will say that housing in our community is incredibly difficult. And I get zinged all the time because I don't, I'm emergency shelter, not transitional housing, and my shelter gets used as transitional housing. And there's, you know, we want people to go into recovery, and we want people to find employment, and staying and using the shelter address does not conducive to recovery or employment, you know, so transitional housing might be a beneficial thing for our community. If we want to try to recover some of that have like those, the containment pair, somebody even look at purchasing that property, something like that. Spitballing some ideas. Is it an option for us financially, but it's something we could look at, or even, I don't know what that would look like, but transitional housing is not a bad thing. Just don't have enough of it. It can be a very good thing, you know. We'll be aware of epidemics, all these things that we're all, we're struggling with across the board, and those are more appropriate ways to help homelessness than an emergency shelter. It's more conducive to the social determinants of health and things like that.
Which I hear what you are saying, and I agree that the community needs transitional housing. I don't believe that this is the city of Adrian's link. And if we had a housing agency, a Lenawee Housing Agency or Housing Authority, whatever those are called, where we can transition this to that housing authority, I would have no problem with putting in more funds, more severe taxpayer funds into this.
We do.
Okay, but we don't know if they're willing and interested in taking this over.
That was, I was a spitballing an idea.
I know.
But we do have that. We have housing help as the local housing authority for Lenawee County. And it is not uncommon, you know, Washmore County, Jackson County, it is not uncommon for, it's typically a county, not the city.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's not
to help run those programs.
Right, so if the county wanted to step in and be the owner purchaser of this building to run the transitional housing, I think that that is definitely something that, you know, that should be looked into. But we don't, we don't have the staff. We don't have the knowledge. We don't, I don't, you know, we might have the funding right now to put money into this, but that's because we've done so well with our, with our funds over the last few years. It doesn't mean in five years we're going to have the funds to be the manager and the runner of this transitional housing agent, agency. So I really think that we have to be very cautious on how long the city of Adrian wants to be responsible for this building and the residents there. If other agencies want to be responsible, we can certainly partner with them, but I am not interested in, in putting in more city taxpayer dollars into this without some guarantees of assistance from other agencies, Lenawee County, the state, whoever, and having someone else run this prep. So that's where I stand. I'm not for putting in a whole new roof. You know, twenty thousand dollars maybe to get by for a year, but come the end of one year, I think we should be out of this housing business as the city of Adrian. It's my, it's what I'm hearing, not only my personal opinion, it's what I'm hearing from constituents. There are many people who've reached out to me who said, what are we doing? Why are we spending this money on this building? And I hear that.
And I feel like from being in those continuing repair meetings with, with you as well, Commissioner Kethel Berry, that I feel like there, there was a movement even before this happened, discussing that, and asking those hard questions and saying, what can we do for continued care to get this transitional housing? So I think those are conversations, and I know there's a meeting next week, that we, you know, we can ask those hard questions and see where they're at, and see if this is something that we can really pursue.
Well, I think that some of these other housing agencies are discussing would really embrace this. I mean, because like Commissioner Kethel Berry said, we've had an issue with temporary housing for a long time. The people that stay there are going to be paying to stay there, so when people are saying to you they're concerned about, you know, the city's spending taxpayer dollars on this, it's not like we're going off the drain. I mean, we're going to be making money off of it.
I highly doubt that we are going to make the money back that we spent. I just, I just, I'll, I would be
We can address that accordingly.
Yep, prove me wrong, but I hope that that would be the case, but I just, I can't. It would take a very long time for, and if we're not running it anymore, how much of that income or how much of the rent each month would be going to us, because if there's a housing authority that's collecting the rent, then some of it's going to go to them, and, you know, and we're going to get a portion if we're no longer running, owning the building, or, you know, it would be such an odd situation to be in, I'm not sure what to call it.
I think this is a partnership from the very beginning. I haven't looked at it as the city of Adrian doing all of this, because like you said, we don't have a staff.
We don't have a staff.
So I'd look at it as a partnership with other county agencies, and if they're on board, I think we should move ahead. If they're not on board, that's some of the clear direct message to us. Spend the twenty thousand dollars, fix it up for a year and bail.
Yes, and let people know that this is, unfortunately, other entities aren't interested in, in helping them. We've helped them for a year, but that's as much as we can go.
But what do you, what's our outlook in the year?
Yeah, that's a really good question at this point.
Okay, because I wasn't a big, I wasn't sold that the potential buyer is going to buy in the first place. Now, I didn't base my decision on that. You know, I, I based that decision on pretty much it was a humanitarian response by the city of Adrian to, to help its residents. Now, when it comes to making the money back on it, I think that, you know, the two biggest things in real estate, mortgage and property taxes, we don't have either. We bought with cash, and then now it's all the tax hold this, but, so we don't have those, we have overhead, and essentially, who manages the property? Would it be a third party property management company? So we there is, with how many seventy-five units? How many units?
We say seven, eight, but it's probably a few more.
I mean, I mean, so if you do simple math, I mean, I did it last meeting, it's, it's essentially a quarter million dollars here in cash flow, minus utilities. You know, right, and overhead and all the other things, so we will get it back. It's a matter of how long. So it's like, so we don't have to pay the bank, we don't got to pay the city, because we own it. So I think that, long term, I think that, you know, and I don't know where I'm at, you know, with this either, but he needs to know what's our plan with the bill. Now, now, we say about in a year we want to be out, but how are we going to be out?
I know.
You know?
I mean, so we talk about how many households in Lenawee County right now, I'll have a more accurate number on my next Q page, but how many households are homeless in Lenawee County right now? And I'm just saying spitballing single entity households, or maybe a married couple, because they don't typically deal with children as much. But if you say seventy, we can fill seventy there. We have forty to fifty in shelter. That's a hundred and twenty housing units that we need in Lenawee County right now to house all of the homeless in our and that's not even talking about children or families.
I mean, it's, I mean, we all own homes here. We all, I mean, it is competitive out there to get an apartment. I mean, it is dog eat dog. I mean, it's ruthless, and if somebody lists a unit and yeah, fit the application, you gotta suffer through, and you have thirty to make qualify, thirty people, you gotta pick. You know, it's, it's not a good feeling to do that, so it's, Kelly's absolutely right when it comes to just the, the lack of not how the affordable housing that people can afford, and, and you know, and people would think I'd be on the other end of this, but I just think that, you know, from an investment standpoint, we're investing in our people. We're also invested in that building too, to get it so we can have affordable housing for people that, you know, that need it. All around bad times, you know, whatever, so.
So are you looking at it, I mean, it still would be transitional housing, though, so someone would have to set all those policies and keep track of who's in. Okay, you're sixty days or ninety days, whatever it is, or up, and who's working with them to find permanent housing. I mean, I assume they have people that can make that assumption. Hopefully, they have someone who's helping them find transition or permanent housing. But I'm just saying, if we don't have partners in this, I'm really, we don't have the city staff available to manage this, not without hiring another position at this. And that, who would be, this would be their full time job, was to be the manager and the person to make sure everything's going.
That's, I think that, I think that, first, Greg and Michelle and the rest of the people on the ULC have done an amazing job enabling this crisis, but I think that we have been in crisis mode, and we're just starting to come out of that. So these are valid conversations to have with those entities. Right, now we, we're starting to come out of that crisis mode, and now we can start looking at, so what are we going to do? These are valid conversations to have with those entities to see, is this even viable? I just got an email today from the Salvation Army Michigan that there's seventy-five thousand and five hundred thousand dollar grants available to fix shelters. Transitional housing is included in that, and up to ten million dollars in the state of Michigan. So is that something that we partner with the continuum of care and become? And I don't know if it's a city thing, because these, the homeless certainly aren't just the city of Adrian residents. These people come from all over Lenawee County, and they need help. All of the resources for that are in Adrian, so it's not a city of Adrian issue all the way around. However, all the resources for that are here. But is this something that we can come together and form a partnership that at the very least takes us through this next year? Because it's, it's going to be at least a year. There's, there's no way that we'll want to help all those people in one year.
Well, that's the other thing I was going to bring up. You know, I know we're calling it transitional housing, but these Riverview Terrace residents have nowhere to go. Like, and there's just nothing. I, I've talked to several of them that are telling me that they have to get not, I mean, they can find like a one bedroom apartment, and they're trying to grab it as best as they can, but they have to give, you know, last month's rent, first month's rent, and a security deposit, because they're, they're forcing them to give a lot upfront. They don't have that, so then they lose out on it. It's that competitive. So they're not able, they're really trying. Some of them have children or family in the area or a job. They're trying to stay here, and they just, you know, they're just not able to, to grab these apartments because it's so competitive, just like Commissioner Help said, and so, you know. Yeah, they're going to be in transition for a while, in my opinion. Like, they're going to be in transition for quite a while, just because this isn't something that they, something they did or they chose. This happened to them. I mean, it was a, a large building, and you know, where, where are they supposed to go? And, and like I said, they're just, they're, they're missing out on these apartments that I'm getting calls and texts all the time right now because they're missing out because of that. Because they're like, is there any place you can direct us to get money for this? You know, like, you know, with, with, yeah, with, you know, housing help, with anybody, because they're, they're really desperate, because they know that they need to try to find something more permanent.
And the funding for that is always limited, right? We're using it on hotel vouchers. So, or have used it on hotel vouchers, so that funding is always limited.
And the normal sort of market rate housing is not. Most they pay, I mean, one of them pays in roughly six hundred dollars.
Right.
You can't run an apartment.
And let's remember back when we had our meeting about Adrian, the first public news meeting, and it was very long, and all those entities came to the table, like, because that's their, that's their place where they would send vouchers and this and that. So now it's time for them to call to action, like now, let's, like Commissioner Roberts said, let's partner now, and, and let's see how serious they are. You know, when it comes to, we, you know, we, we did what we think, we, we thought we'd do for our people, but it's time for them to come, put all hands on deck. Let's, you know, let's collaborate, but I'm not, you know, and people that are upset about the money part of it, and, and that really bothers me, because I've heard the same, I've heard some of the same stuff, and it's like, but I've also heard the other side too, it's like, you know, you guys are, you should be very proud of yourself by taking the foresight, you know, for, you know, for doing that for your people, but they're, like Brad said, they're paying rent. These people are, these people, it was no cause of their own. They pay their rent. You know, but like, and like Greg said, like, so in a year, like, once you transition, then where are you going to go? For six hundred bucks a month in rent.
Now, you mentioned, when, when we first started having issues with Adrianian a year and a half ago, or whatever, I remember getting phone calls from mental health and a couple of other agencies that were desperate. You know, they didn't want us to, you know, shut them down, because that was the only place that they could send transitional housing. So unless something has really changed for the better, which I haven't heard about it in the last year, I would think that they're all going to be on board with this. They're going to want to partner in some way, shape, or form, because all of a sudden, there's seventy-five units, you know, for temporary housing. This is like a huge, huge gift to them that they couldn't have seen coming down the road a year, a year and a half. So unless there's something that I don't understand, I just feel like these other agencies are going to be on board to some degree.
So I'm, I'm going to play devil's advocate, though, with what you're saying. You're saying that there are seventy-five units for transitional housing. There are not, because there might be seventy-five units, but those are all taken up with Riverview Terrace residents, and so even after a year.
So it's different. Those were, those are emergency hotel vouchers, right? So what they were using that for is, is emergency shelter, just kind of like what Sherwinburg is. So they would have to find another, they would have to find a motel that would accept government stipend for emergency vouchers. It's very, it's different than transitional housing. So those are two different things. Maybe you need to bring in for that.
The people, the, the agencies who used Adrianian for those vouchers and, and, and emergency housing are not thrilled with us picking up all the spaces, because now they really have no place to pay people. That make, am I like totally off base?
I'm looking at this under a five year period or whatever. I'm not just thinking of the first year. So people are going to trend, people who are from the high rise that are there now, some of them are going to be leaving and going to other places in the short term, some will be there a little longer, but I'm looking at this as a long term project, not a one year project.
And which I, yeah, but my understanding is the people who lived at Riverview Terrace stay there for a very long time, and so no one has any guarantee that in a year from now, they're going No one has any guarantee that in a year from now, there are going to be any open rooms, those seventy five people. I could still be there and there is no open emergency housing.
There's requirements to that, right, so there's requirements to be um. So we're using housing help, the HARA is doing paperwork, there's requirements to being able to stay in that transitional housing. For the fee that we're charging, it's a lesser fee than normal housing with costs, and the requirements are that they're actively looking. They have a housing plan and they're actively looking for housing.
And if and if and if we didn't do it, we'd have seventy five additional people that would need. Go to housing help or anyone else to get those resources anyway, so I mean, it's it's. The math works when it comes, I'm not concerned, I'm not really concerned about the money part, but I'm not, I I I think that over the long term. Ten fifteen years, we can recruit everything we put into it. Um, seventy, you know, I figure. Greg was to put away seventy five thousand a year and back in the general fund for it and and could it operate on? Hundred thousand dollars a year in cash flow, I I would think that building could. That's just me, it would take us thirteen years to get a money back.
I think Greg's concerns, financial concerns, are multifaceted, you talk about Valkyries. And in jeopardy, concerns, I think we need to give it a direction immediately about, so. I think that we're correct, we should look for partners uh, immediately. But I think we should also be concerned about what we do about that road. I'd hate to see us do a major outlet or a roof. We're not sure what we're doing.
You know, the county has an ARPA meeting next week and we are the county seat. They have a lot of money, um, that's something that I think that. Uh, you know, some of us go, we should lobby our county commissioners to bring some of those funds back so we can maybe put into that. Building, we own a couple of capital expenditure standpoint.
These people just, they didn't, they they fell into a hole, they fell into a dark hole, right, and it takes somebody else to help get in that hole. And say, I've been here before, take an empathetic approach to help walk them out, this isn't like. Um, I mean, they they, some of these people may never have been homeless before and now they are, you know, not everybody has been homeless that was in there. And and then all of the, you know, the health considerations, the mental health considerations. That they are suffering um, and with these drastic changes, I I think that this. I I do think the county needs to get on board, I hope they're actually having conversation about our funds and how they can help us. But I think we need to take an empathetic humanitarian approach to this. And through crisis, we may be able to turn this into something that helps our community countywide to um, help. Uh, build a transitional program that builds more success, right? Through transitional housing, we connect people to entrepreneurship programs and all kinds of other things too. Um, so transitional housing can be a really great thing in a community that. You know, has people living in a homeless shelter with forty two bunks, I mean, it's worse than living in the mean. So I, this is, this is a, I just, we can look at this as an opportunity to make positive change. I I we clearly don't have the answers at the table right now, we need to sit with those. You know, those partners that we can consider, but I do think that this is a chance to say we had a crisis, it made us move quickly. I'm incredibly proud of how this community came together to help people. And it is, it it was amazing, um, and now we have an opportunity to make something better for um, our community as well.
Do you think this is something that we, you, cause you are on the continuing care, I just. Come on to those meetings as an outsider um, that you can maybe get on the agenda for next Tuesday, I will be there to support you, but um. Is that something you think we can do?
We have an executive meeting at the end of this week, um, and we can talk about it, I don't know if it's a. An agenda item, we would have enough information, but it's not something that we can't have a meeting for. If that means, you know, if we can have some people sit at the table and say, this is what we need to do, and then right up. We can call a meeting.
Um, like I'm seeing or listening. Um, I agree with a lot of things that a lot of people have said. I think right now we can hope and believe that. Organizations will come and and gather with us to do something, but we don't know that tonight. And I think repairing the roof, spending twenty or twenty five thousand dollars to repair the roof will buy us time, hopefully get us. I don't know that'll make it through the first year, but it ought, hopefully get it through to spring, and we'll have a better idea of what's going on. And then, depending on what that is. If it's prudent to spend more money, replace the roof, working with partners or whomever, there we go, but. I I I'm not comfortable today. Like Commissioner Roberts said, um, putting a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars into a new roof. With not knowing where we may be nine months from now. So I would be in favor of repairing the roof, get it through the winter, and let's get the lay of the land over the next few months. As to do we have partners that are gonna be in this with us, you know, will the county step up and do something um, to help? Yeah, that's where I, that's where my head's at.
I know that there's a time crunch, but is it possible to table this for one more to see if we can pull that together? Uh, and find funding outside of the city of Adrian for some of those costs.
I think you're you're. Putting at risk the ability to use the dome in the course of weather if we wait a few uh, much longer, I didn't put it. Anything on the agenda tonight, obviously, but it was my hope to get some direction and then come. For the next time, that would be in line. Direction. Consider uh, if if we didn't. Decide for a while. I'm a big contractor of immobilizers. Are you out in the cold weather, and in fact, regardless of whether you're in too cold enough weather that. You can't do the work on roofs anymore. And you're in cold enough weather, it's gonna be in pretty quickly, so where it now becomes on. Particularly on Plaza Boulevard there, because you have the community space.
So you're such you want direction that you. Replace the roof or fix the roof, and then also whatever, do you want to hold it or? What do you, what do you ask?
Well, I think in terms of the question of holder, don't hold it, that's a, that can be a lot of current conversation. But it's not the same, so it's urgency with that, I think, if we're gonna try to repair the roof. Or repair or replace the roof in time for cold weather.
And repairing it will be allowed to have access to that community space, at least to buy us more time, you would say?
Yeah, uh, it's important to realize that roof is over. The office, um, the apartment where the. Sort of office manager stays as well as the former nightclub space, so. Leaks are a concern either way.
And there was a guarantee that it would last a year, is that what I remember?
We go eighteen months.
I'm a member of preparing for the twenty thousand dollars.
You too.
And I I if we need to move motion away a bit because. We are in a crisis mode right now to assist President and. I'm okay, I'm okay.
Funny, like Doug said, I mean, I I'm a hundred percent agree with like Doug, like, when it comes to like, what are we gonna hold it or just? Figure out you renew that, like, give you with the foundation and the, I didn't know that, you know, so he just told me, that's a. Major concern of mine, cause we know how much that costs, I mean, you know, so. Um, that was a good question, but you know, I mean, we have to take your guidance when it comes to getting people in there to know what they're looking for. And to find out what are sitting, but when it comes to roof, you can just repair it, repair it right now, and that'll buy us more time and um.
Yeah, I mean, there's other expenses that we can easily list. If someone steps forward, an organization steps forward, so even they want to be a partner and they're bringing money to help. Uh, I I or or we're looking for state funding or a local funding. I I I think there's other things that we can get some assistance with besides the roof. Uh, I mean, immediately make a list of things that could be worked on, small and large.
We're a community, people will come to the table and help support, I'm sure there's some organizations that would. Do some, I mean, we don't want. Yeah, I mean, there'd be people that would help, you know, when it comes to company wise, when it comes to electricians and. Plumbers and all that, I mean, cause you can, this is no act for those folks that I happen to and. Um, this, I would think a whole different way if it was, you know, these are people that. Had jobs and just, you know, people that are disabled and people that are just. These are, these are our people and.
You're right, you have no idea, if a company finds out, we need a dozen heating and cooling units, we know, right, someone might step up.
There are residents, there are also county residents, there are also state residents. And I think that we need to keep. Discussing that they're not just the Adrian residents, they are county residents, they are some state residents. And we need their help to make this happen.
It's always been that way, it's always been that way, always, always have people here, county outside. Um, I do have a specific quote, if you were inclined to make a motion if you needed, I could do that, but. I think there are other companies we didn't specifically ask for a quote on repair, and so. For I guess I would prefer to wait on that until next meeting and see if we have um, other options. You know, all the pricing besides one. I think we have time for that.
I think the best we can do, do the best we can do. What else more would you need from us? Like, I always, we have conversations, it's like, it's easy for us to buy a hotel and. Tell Greg to go run it, you know, but but I mean, you have the tools you need to. To do this right, it's ma, you know, to figure out how we're gonna manage it, I mean, cause.
Well, that's, I mean, management is the big challenge, right, we're waiting on a number of things. We, so we asked, for example, our janitorial service that does city hall, they're both. Doing a weekly room, they are kind of our. Concept is, we'll we'll essentially turn each room once a week, you know, and so like, change the bedspread. That lens, clean the room, unlike it was being prepared for new hotel guests, although it won't be. Guests in there. A common area of cleaning. We have a stock of, we have actually buy towels, so we have a stock of towels, so we could kind of. Provide a laundry service for towels as well, because there's a commercial washer and dryer. Other than that, folks have to go now, so. Really, if there's, there's one coin operating seven machines on site, although they got like all two doors down. Do their other laundry, that's kind of our concept, so we've tried to. We're fortunate that one of uh, Castleberry's guests was able to come on and. We're able to give her a room and. Small contractual wage, and she was able to do the. Routine cleaning and and man the desk. On a part time basis, you know, there'll be lots of desk hours, right? Only have to deal with a couple hours a day, but whatever somebody has to pay for, the room key changed out. You know, we have that, but it it, you know, that's not, she's not enough. She had a hospital today, so that's the worst. I have, so now at the point where she's not there, it's back to back breath, they're the, they're running our motel for us. We don't have any staff. We have another resident who's interested in helping. Uh, maybe she could be the laundry room person, combination. Lisa, so the person. You can get by, not very much while. People with their own site. Staffing is the real challenge. Finding a way to keep that place clean during the trash. We changed out the dumpster to a bigger dumpster, we put in new trash receptacles throughout it. It was atrocious in the wake of. There was trash piled up all over, all the, on all the walkways, yellow jackets everywhere. Uh, trash, the dumpster was overflowing, we cleaned all that up. Um, but we gotta keep it clean. That means some of the staffing. We can't spend too much money on that and still have a cash flow. A small amount of rent that we charge, which. In light of what those folks paid previously, we we told them three hundred dollars a month, well, we're gonna charge them. Starting on the fifteenth, we'll probably end it for September. Small security deposit, mostly a hundred dollars security deposit. You know, at that level, can't afford much in terms of paying people to. Buy services out, that's the real challenge. Proposed answer to that, we're researching. Options for that, we haven't gotten information back from everybody, asking for information from, yeah, so. It's a work in progress.
And we're doing the janitorial stuff because that's what, I mean, cause. We didn't have that at River View, we just wanted to make make sure our rooms are clean.
That's right, we wanna, you know, but you know what, some of the rooms were like at River View. Our department was in there frequently. As well, that's sometimes, and uh, it's somewhat self protective. To make sure we clean every room once. You know, we in. You know, anecdotally, there've been experiences with, well, almost, almost everybody there has had some sort. That makes the problem of of finality more difficult. Some of the other hotel stays that were. Find problems like housing help, gotta go for six hundred dollars from the county end, but somebody was flushing kitty litter down a toilet. And Splash Universe, somebody took the one of the jacuzzis and filled that with kitty litter. So litter box. Oh, there, you know, there are reasons to get in every room every week and make sure like some of them. And for. Uh, if there's nothing else on that, if you want to identify what what the ordinance is that we have on the first reading tonight, so we talked again about. Problem with people leaving trash though, term would be fairly substantial at this point and. Kind of waited a minute to address it because people were still firing them back down and things were unplugged, but. If we're at a relatively stable point now. What we found is that the or our ordinance doesn't contain language currently as to when you have to bring the. Coat back in, it does for recycling coats, and not for trash coats. But was written, the idea that people were taking bags out. Take bags out, but there are people that bring them back in, all alike. So there was a time before which you could not bring them out, but there's no time to tell the, as to when you need to bring them back. So we're we're modeling what's in there for the, for the uh, recycling codes in terms of. Driving an island refuse codes that we brought back. To somewhere, and so the second que- question we're trying to address is where is that? Also, we don't describe that right now. I I what I proposed in there is that they be stored either in a closed structure. You have vents or they were behind the top lock. And we're just not in the. Both on the discussion, we consider not, but I would say like, um, second reading. We're unhappy with what it says right now, that that's what it says right now, just be. So that people don't just bring it behind the sidewalk, right, and now, you know. So pretty simple, just try and also just try to get the word bag out of there everywhere. This program.
The question, the only question I had in reading through the the proposed ordinance, the the changes, um. I think it said that we'd have all the all the touts back or require them to be off the street by eight P M the day. The trash is collected, and I'm wondering. Eight P M or seven A M the next morning, I I I would be more comfortable seven A M the next morning, if people are late, getting home late. For a second shift, whatever, if we do it by seven A M and say.
Concerned about the second shift as well, those workers, because um, in my neighborhood, they don't usually get the trash. Until four o'clock, three in the afternoon, they they don't get it till pretty late, and so a second shift worker would already be gone to work, and so. I would, I would hate to see them get. A warning or a fine or anything of the sort because they just weren't home. A warning or a fine or anything of the sort because they just weren't home yet to get it back.
Well, the reason we picked that time is because that's what it says.
Never run enforced anyway, so, I, I mean, I could say.
I know, but you, we, we can do that, but what we'll have to do is go back and change them both, and the other one is. Another section besides that, that we're addressing right now, recycling, so a separate section.
I anticipate Glenn cruising around at nine o'clock at night.
The trash bin, because they, they have so much trash at that house that they're putting out too, it's not a duplex, it's not a rental. It is literally a single-family home for sure, um, where they're putting, you know, and. I don't, when I come back, I see that they are empty, so is that something we're gonna get charged more for, and they're not getting. Charged because they're putting out double the amount of trash, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that without.
So they're putting out two totes, like they already had a tote of their own, like that was their first.
Hey Matt, are you on there? Do you know the answer to that, to the mayor's question?
Hey Greg, I am, I, I did not hear the question.
So the question is, the, the mayor's observed that people put out their own trash can in addition to a tote. And our question is, are we being charged extra in those circumstances?
Uh, Stevens is not supposed to be picking up uh trash cans other than their own. Um, and if they are collecting it, they probably will be getting charged double, so.
The, the resident will be charged double, is that what you're saying?
No, they, they will charge the city double, so they need to be approved Stevens trash bin.
Right, well, you might want to address that with Stevens, because apparently they are picking those up, and they shouldn't be picking them up unless. Well, they shouldn't be picking them up.
We've got provisions where they can give a second city tote, right?
Right.
A new second Stevens tote.
And, and Matt, while you're on, another, another question to go along with that, the other thing I have observed. Um, especially on like a lot of the main streets, because I see it when I'm driving, is it looks like it's regular trash sitting in the recycle tote, and it's on like a recycle day. But they're filling their trash tote, and they're filling their recycle tote, but they're filling it with trash, the way it looks from driving by, I've seen it at several different residents. Um, it, how is that addressed, do you know?
Uh, so if, if they notice that the trash or the recycling is tainted, they will likely not pick it up. Um, and I, I guess it's up to the driver whether they pick it up or not. Uh, so, any tainted recycling will not be taken to the recycle center, and that can, that can kill a whole load of recycling, so. We have to maybe do our part to make sure that people aren't putting recyclable, or not putting trash in the recycle bin.
Well, I think they are doing that, because when I drive back by later, I do notice that there's still trash sitting in those recycle totes. But the regular ones look like they're, they're empty now, so I think that they are doing that, but maybe that's something we can. Suburbage we can throw into a water bill or something, just to remind or put it out there on social media or something. Because I am seeing it, but I do see that then, and then they just leave that tote out there forever, because nobody picked it up and it was full of trash. Even though it's a recycling tote, that's what you see as well.
Yeah, one thing I've noticed is that there's, like, on, on the north side of town, this week is not a recycle week. Yet, there are, I saw four or five of them today that are chock full of recycled material.
Alternate, we kind of think.
Can we go back to the ordinance change, and we can talk about this after we're done talking about what we want to. I would, I would like to hear the rest of the changes first, and then we can talk about all the other concerns.
Those are really the only substantive changes.
Well, we had the discussion on where the trash totes can and can't be, so that, me, that's, that's a pretty substantial distinction that we should be having. Where, where can those totes be?
Really, anywhere behind the top line.
And are we okay with that? Because there's a lot of people who are not doing that currently. And they may not feel that they have that ability to do so currently. Are we going to allow any kind of. Variance for people that have incredibly small driveways? It's all, if they don't have a backyard, I mean, or they don't have. They only have grass on the side of their house, I'm, I'm thinking of a couple of places in my neighborhood. That. There's just, I, I don't know without where they're putting it right now, which is not behind their house, where they would put it. Because there's no concrete, they'd have to drag it onto the grass. No one else is concerned about this?
Some of those people have to wheel their cars down lawn driveways.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we're going after some of the things like I see our, my neighborhood. Uh, the people who move with four feet this way, and then they fill them up with four feet this way. Over the sidewalk, the pack, and the trash cans have never gone anywhere. Or the wonderful neighbors who keep their trash cans on the porches, the porch, that's a good one. A good one in the neighborhood, so.
What's the difference between a front porch and right next to a front porch? Because that's technically the. Property, not property line, the property, the structure, and that's what we're saying, is that it can be at the. It doesn't have to be behind the house, right?
No, we didn't, we didn't say that.
So it can be right next to the home.
Right next to, yeah. Which would be a lot better than what we've got today.
Well, and the thing is, there are houses that I, I've seen that they're, they're just behind, behind their homes right now, like behind that. Front side of that house, because there is, I can tell by what kind of house there's no other place to put it, but they are getting it behind the. The very front of their house, but it's like right at the side, it's barely behind, but it looks, I mean, there is no other place for them to put it, you can tell.
I'm good with ordinance as it is, behind the front line of the house, Adrian's always so behind with everything. Take a poll in cities in Michigan and find out who lost bag, who doesn't, I guarantee we're the minority before we change over, I mean, it's. You, people will find a place to put them, I mean, I, and, and I, one email we did get, one, one on Mackenzie Street was, was, that was, I mean, that was a small driveway, but. Turn around, sit on the side of garage, I mean, where can people put their trash bag for their totes? In the garage or in the house, I don't know.
And I do believe a neighboring city tells, you can't even have it visible at all, right?
There, and some of this is in there, I just changed last part of that, but this is in a building, fast enclosure or. What they would say is behind the floor. You cannot have them within sight of the street.
And I'm not, I'm not on. But, no, not, um. But I, and I don't know how to educate people that recycling is every other week, I mean, that. For those who were recycling previously, they understood it, now we just. Poised this on top of everybody and they haven't learned the rules yet.
I guess the old angel of dance or water bill.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Unfortunately, there are some people who have, I don't even know if I live in the south side of the street.
Most of my neighbors recycle, I, I'm confused, I, I look, I look down there, I'm like, oh, they got theirs out.
So how do we enforce?
Uh, our plan for the, the totes of the curb are, we're gonna have stickers made that will go over the, the lip of the. The lid of a tote, that'll serve as a notice, you won't be able to open it until you do something about the sticker. So I hope this is about to educate people and, and that doesn't work, you know, as always, the next step is. I hope it's, that, that will be special, but we, apparently we did stickers in the past. When we had some fire, version of the service and. There were, uh, almost, so, like, and some public comment.
At this time, we will open it up to public comment, just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will start inside the chambers first.
Uh, hello, I'm working in Ramos, of course I have things to say, I always. So. With this, Adrian, of course, there was plenty of excitement. For this to be transitional housing, and the organization that directly, for instance, I sit on how we help for. There was more than excited to have the opportunity to help with this. They are involved to some degree because of the residents and the cases, but they're excited the opportunity of this, of course. They're willing to hear more, and I seem to be the delegate here for them, so. I, I definitely recommend a contact with Claude though, although I believe that that is most efficient response. And that, yeah, very much me in terms of how we hear in Asia, we have like seven units. And one of them, I don't think is actually within the city, and, and of course. There's a lot more than seven homeless people, seven homeless families in Asia, in a city of about twenty thousand people, there's quite a few homeless people. So seventy years, of course, still won't fix the issue, but it will be a large part, a large step in getting to that. And it's a great way to find organizations, to bring awareness of this, to get further help. And maybe the county needs convincing, maybe they need a little bit of shame to come to the table. Maybe some bold, maybe similarly with the state. But this is a big issue, and as long as we actually buy, take care of it properly. This could be an asset, and it might be something that we don't really want to get rid of, instead we want to make more out of that. But that could be the downfall, I definitely recommend fix it all, regardless of what you do with it, whether you hold on to it for thirteen years or whatever. It will pay itself back, and you can eventually get rid of it in one year or whatever. I definitely recommend just holding on to it though. Again, this is a thing that's always been, that people aren't just gonna stop making transitional housing in one year. People aren't just gonna stop making transitional housing. This is something we need, I definitely recommend you do it, and recommend you go right to fix the things. Don't just fix them for a few months or one year or two years, actually do the work if you get the money out of it one way or another. And I have more things for you in the regular meeting.
We will now open it up to the Zoom participants, there is also a three-minute time limit, for the record, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Kent O'Carroll, one ten South Locust, I guess just listening to you guys today, it makes me think of the guy who. Jumps out of a plane with a parachute and didn't take the classes on how to pull the ripcord. A lot of the things that you do are, you do things without putting thought into it, and I think a lot of the comments today. Reflect upon that, you didn't think about all the costs, you just jumped in and did this, and that's what concerns me. The other thing, and I have no problem that you did this, but if you had a plan, and you communicated it. To the community of what you were gonna do, and then presented it and then did it, you didn't do that. You just did a knee-jerk reaction and you bought a hotel. Another thing you have to consider is, I mean, you've got a pension deficit, and I think more than half of you on the city commission. When you first started, that pension deficit was nineteen million dollars, it's all the way up to twenty-six million dollars now. And you're supposedly, quote unquote, under a twenty-year plan to eliminate that. You're talking about holding this building for fifteen years, ten to fifteen years. That's, you know, if you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run it a year, that's another one point, a little over a million dollars. I get, again, no thought, I think you guys don't know how to pull the ripcord, thank you.
This is Lynn Punnett, I live at Newburgh Road in Tecumseh Township. And I chair the C O C., and so I wanted to respond. With a couple of commitments, um, one for Commissioner Castleberry, I'm preparing the agenda tomorrow for Thursday's executive committee meeting, and so I will. Definitely include this on the agenda. Um, and, and I guess just to clarify, I, some of you probably know, but. The continuum of care would be the applicant, the collaborative applicant typically. With Mishda or with HUD for grants, although not the owner of anything, and so. Housing Help of Lenaway is definitely an option, I won't even attempt to speak for Claudia if she wanted to. Uh, partner or outright be an owner. Owner of the motel and, um, as the HARA and seek funding for that. But the other option in community is the Lenaway Housing Development Corporation, the L H D C. Which is the nonprofit uh housing entity in Lenaway County, and so that's just another option besides just the HARA. Who would work with the C O C. to apply for funding, um, and. Commissioner Castleberry and I have spoken a lot about a HUD grant that is available right now with a deadline looming. But this project is perfect for the rural and unsheltered grant. Um, that is available, and Lenaway Now has volunteered, offered their help to complete that grant. But we weren't really sure what the city's plans were, if they were gonna turn around and sell it to a for-profit motel chain, it sounds like that's not gonna happen. And so maybe there's just some, some better options on the table now to more seriously consider. The rural and unsheltered grant, and I think if we all came together, and especially with Randy at Lenaway Now. Uh, helping us, he has extensive experience in that, I, I think we have a chance. Um, so I'll be bold enough to say, let's get these agencies together. Um, Commissioner Strayer, I agree with you, yes, they're gonna say yes, let's do this, let's figure out how. Um, to just clarify, there are four transitional housing units in Lenaway County. They're two duplexes on East Sienna Heights Drive across from Sienna Heights University. Those are transitional units, and the people can live there two years in a program while they stabilize and. Prepare for, um, whatever's next in their life.
Your time is up, you're welcome to public comment during our regular meeting. Thank you. Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Then our meeting out in the regular city chambers at seven.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
Present.
Mr. Help.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gows.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Movey adopt the consent agenda.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
I have.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Yep.
CR twenty-two, oh eight nine, appears on the full, uh, resolution appears on page nineteen of the packet. Um, it says we're going to appoint Mr. Benke to the Human Relations Commission, but in the third, whereas it says he's being reappointed to the, the commission. I just want to make sure that I think it's an appointment, not a reappointment.
It is.
So we'll just crack the minutes on that, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gows.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted with the, um, addition of adding to the minutes, the correction by an all yes vote.
Under ordinances, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero five is a first reading, an introduction of an ordinance to amend chapter sixty-six of the Adrian City Code. This is a first reading only. We are moving on to public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first.
Hello, Joaquin Ramos, four twenty-two, South Winter Street. I know it's been ages. It's great to see you all again. So I'm of course just here to let you know that on this Friday, a second Friday, A three's event. We'll be starting at six P M. in Parish Park and we'd love to see some of you. And of course, if you come, feel free to engage some of the residents. Uh, I'm sure they'll be happy to hear from their public officials and be a two. If you talk to them, see them, of course, we'll be there for a while. And then we'll have our meet on Sunday and at some point, uh, you'll see her next second Friday. Of course, we'll be transitioning to cold weather soon. So if you want to see outdoor second Fridays during somewhat warm weather, you should get to it soon. You're running out of months. But we'll be back next year outside like usual. So hope to see you there. And that's all for now. Of course, you know that I'm very much in support of the transitional housing and I encourage you all to indeed move forward with that. Thank you.
At this time, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. You will see the three minute time limit on the screen. And also please state your name and address for the record.
This is Lynn Punnett. I live on Newburgh Road in Tecumseh Township. Thanks for the opportunity to wrap up a couple of thoughts. Um, just to clarify, um, the transitional housing units that I, I mentioned briefly, there are four transitional housing units. Two duplexes on Sienna, East Sienna Heights Drive. There are seven permanent housing units for chronically homeless individuals on Broad Street at what's called the Legacy Apartment Complex. And it's confusing, um, but in total, that, that's it for our county. And so we definitely need more. I know it's ideal to have a, a plan, a really great, perfect plan before you enter into things. Um, I like that too. But I really want to say thank you to the city for, uh, stepping up and buying the Adrian in. Uh, it was an opportunity. It was, um, time sensitive. And I'm extremely grateful that, that you did that, even though we, you didn't have every answer and didn't go in uh, knowing every single thing to expect. In terms of your staffing, um, they're doing amazing work. I was there today. I, I was at both of the motels for the resident meetings, presenting options on behalf of the continuum of care. Twelve pages of options for housing outside of Lenaway County mostly because it doesn't exist here. Um, but got to hear from the residents and I think what a lot of people don't realize is the, to run the motel is one thing, but for whoever owns it and manages the property, a key piece is case management for the people. So, um, it, it's not just as simple as running a desk and hiring cleaning services and fixing roofs. There need to be experienced case managers when you're working with folks who have lived through trauma like these residents have and like homeless people have lived through. And that is not cheap, but a really, really critical piece. And that would come along with that HUD grant that I mentioned, the rural and unsheltered grant that's on the table right now. We would include in that whoever the owner ends up being, uh, we would include a request for case management because it is the most critical piece, um, to having success in that property. Thanks so much.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Castleberry?
So as someone that does work in housing, I want to say I am incredibly proud of the city commission for pulling the ripcord and buying, uh, the, uh, Adrian in, uh, more so I'm, I'm, I'm proud of Michelle and Greg and the incredible work they did. I mean, uh, Lenaway Transportation, the Adrian Fire Department, the Police Department, how all of those agencies came together so quickly. Um, to quite frankly, save, possibly save lives. And then I, I also want to share that uh, the continuum of care of our community, all the organizations in the continuum of care, Department of Health and Human Services, uh, Housing Help of Lenaway, Community Mental Health, all, all of those organizations have done a phenomenal job of trying to meet the needs of a, a very special group of people. And regardless of all the comments that have come out, we should be very proud of our community. It's, it's outstanding and astounding all that we've accomplished in such a short time. And, uh, I'm, I'm so amazed by what has happened and so proud of every person that has stepped forward to help out a little bit.
Commissioner Help?
I promised myself I wasn't going to say anything about this, but it's, uh, it becomes frustrating when you try to slow things down for people and have them understand what we've done, especially Commissioner Strayer and I, who've been here almost seven years now, come November. When you want to attack the pension deficit, Merz told Commissioner Strayer and I, six and a half years ago, we had a meeting with them that you have to do two things. You have to make lump sum payments or you have to, uh, go from a defined benefit to defined contribution. With that being said, every union in the city now has either went from a defined benefit bridge or, or new hires defined contribution, number one. Number two is that we've put over, you know, what, lot, different commissions before this current commission, we put over a million dollars of lump sum surpluses on the pension deficit. Now, one would think that somebody that follows us as much as they do would understand that we are not going to see a, a decrease in that liability until people on the defined benefit plan fall off. It is going to be ten or fifteen years. We knew the liability was going to go up, but we've done everything to that point to address what Merz told us to do. So with that being said, the pension deficit is being addressed. I mean, we had a police labor union open up their contract to negotiate it, to bridge it down. So everybody's working together, staff and elected body. And it just becomes frustrating sitting up here and seeing the, hearing the same song and dance every first and third Monday with not factual statements. That's all.
I would just like to, um, make a quick comment that, um, we really lost a, a huge, huge dedicated, committed person in our community yesterday with the passing of Frank Dick. And what Frank Dick did for this community can never, there's just nothing that I can say to, to the volume of, of what he did for our community, what, um, when Shirley was still alive, what Frank and Shirley did together. And, um, it was just, it's just a huge loss. And, um, I just hope that we will remember, um, remember Frank and, and just keep his family and everyone and everyone's lives that he has touched, um, in your thoughts during this, this difficult time. And it's just a huge, huge loss for our community. I was devastated when I received word yesterday morning and, um, just want to keep that on everyone's, um, in, in everyone's thoughts right now. And just really every time you drive by, anything that says Frank, donated by Frank and Shirley Dick, there's a lot. Um, if you look around, there's a lot, including my place of employment. Um, half my building was donated by Frank Dick. So, um, in honor of his wife, but it, it's everywhere. The Y M C A, it's just, it's, it's everywhere. And, and what he did, there are just no words for this, what he did for this community. And let's just remember that in this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, I have two things. I, I want to remind everyone that on October first, right downtown at the Four Corners, the Greg Adams E-Race the Stigma Five K and Walk Race is happening. If you haven't signed up yet, please do so quickly so we can get the T-shirts ordered. Um, if you go to the Greg Adams E-Race the Stigma Race, it's on Facebook. Um, it's also at Community Mental Health. Uh, and the race, uh, brings in money to support community mental health measures in our county. Um, it's been very well, uh, supported by the community in past years. This one's a little different because it's in October. So we're hoping that we'll have the same support as we normally do when we host it in, in May. Um, the second thing is I had the, uh, pleasure of volunteering for the first Friday's event on Friday at the, um, at the information tent with Commissioner Strayer and I, it was the biggest and best that I had seen. And, um, Michelle and the rest of the committee and our city staff who helped put that on, just do a workman's load for volunteering for that night. And they are volunteering and so are the rest of the people who are there that night. And, um, it's just amazing to see so many people enjoying downtown on a beautiful Friday night. So thank you to Michelle and the rest of the committees and our city staff for doing that.
May I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.